Good evening, everyone. I just want to let you know if you're feeling a little claustrophobic, there is overflow upstairs, or if you're texting your loved ones, you can tell them that there is a place for them to sit upstairs. Okay? Welcome to the May 13, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting. This meeting is now called to order. Ms. Witten, will you please take role?
Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor Day.
Here.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Here.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
Chair Ayers.
Here. We will now offer an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate. Can you hear me? Oh. Thank you. Can you hear me better now? All right, there we go. We will now offer an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but if you'd like to join us, please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come humble and grateful for all your blessings. We thank you for the opportunity to gather to discuss local issues. We thank you for the local businesses, the EMS, fire personnel, and the police personnel that faithfully serve our community. We ask for comfort for the Lupus family with the recent loss of Debbie. We ask for your guidance and direction as we decide the county business. Now humbly submit these prayers, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will hold citizens' comments near the beginning of the meeting. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comments, to join by telephone. You may dial in one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the Raise Your Hand feature. You can press the Raise Hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window, or press star nine if you are calling in by telephone. Let me say that that for anybody for the public hearing, you don't need to speak now. You can wait for the public hearing. Are there any comments?
No, ma'am. We have two people, but they're signed up for the public hearing.
Okay. I have one addition to the agenda. If there are no objections, a proclamation recognizing National Police Week. Additionally, I'd like to remove item 10 from this agenda, Discussion on Farm Vehicle Exemptions. Are there any other changes? All right. Supervisor McDaniel will now read aloud the proposed resolution.
Whereas May is designated as Business Appreciation Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia, acknowledging the irreplaceable role of businesses in propelling economic growth, and whereas the vibrant businesses of Rockbridge County stand as the cornerstone of our economic vitality and progression. And whereas despite facing challenges involving inflation, workforce, housing, childcare observed throughout our nation, many Rockbridge County businesses have exhibited resilience, adaptability, and even prosperity in navigating difficult times. And whereas Rockbridge County businesses play a pivotal role in the county's economic prosperity and expansion, and whereas Rockbridge County businesses continuously evolve, preserve, and often thrive amidst economic uncertainty, and whereas Rockbridge County currently boasts approximately 1,200 business license holders and 30 manufacturing operations, with a significant portion being small businesses operated by dedicated entrepreneurs. And whereas Rockbridge County expresses gratitude and appreciation for the unwavering commitment and resilience demonstrated by all local businesses. Now therefore, we the Board of Supervisors of Rockbridge County reaffirm our recognition of May as Business Appreciation Month. We urge all citizens to acknowledge the vital contributions of local business owners and extend support to their endeavors.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
So move.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day. Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes. Supervisor Lyons will now read aloud the proposed proclamation for EMS Week.
Proclamation expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Rockbridge County, the local emergency medical service agencies and providers. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States has designated May 19 through 25th as National Emergency Medical Services Week. And whereas the men and women of the EMS agencies serving Rockbridge County, the City of Lexington, and the City of Buena Vista provide a vital public service by responding to the EMS needs of our residents and visitors. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their local EMS providers. And whereas safety of our citizens is a primary goal of local, state, and national government. And whereas EMS providers are often among the first to arrive upon the scene of emergencies and disasters, be they medical, natural, or man-made, to provide immediate and often life-saving assistance while fulfilling their mission to provide high-quality, pre-hospital care. And whereas EMS providers participate in numerous hours of rigorous training and continuing education in order to enhance their life-saving skills and thereby dramatically improve the survival and recovery rate of their patients. And whereas EMS providers and agencies demonstrate a high level of commitment and dedication to the communities and fellow citizens by providing training, health screenings, continued extra precautions that ensures the safety of crew members and patients. Now therefore, three, the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors call upon all citizens of Rockbridge County to observe the week of May 19 through 25th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week, during which all our residents may join in celebrating the dedication of our local EMS providers, career, volunteers, past and present, and their families, whose support allows them to serve our community, adopted this 13th day of May, 2024. A motion we approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes. And now Supervisor Day will read aloud the proposed proclamation for National Police Week.
A proclamation expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Rockbridge County, local, to local law enforcement officers and support staff. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States has designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week of which, May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agencies serving Rockbridge County, the City of Lexington, the Town of Glasgow, the City of Buena Vista, provide a vital public service by safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens of Rockbridge County. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies. And the members of the local law enforcement agencies recognize the duty to serve the people by safeguarding life, property, and the protection against violence, disorder, and the protection of the innocent against depression and the weak against oppression. And whereas, safety of our citizens is a primary goal of local, state, and national government. Whereas law enforcement is one of the few chosen professions that require the willingness to lay down one's life to protect others. And whereas the daily performance of law enforcement officers' normal duty is dangerous, stressful, often unappreciated, and requires a special person and a supportive family. And whereas, Rockbridge County Sheriff's Office, Lexington Police Department, Buena Vista Police Department, Buena Vista Sheriff's Office, Glasgow Town Police. Thank you. Rockbridge Regional Jail, Virginia State, Virginia State Police, Virginia Military Institute Police, Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation Police, Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources Conservation Police, and all federal law enforcement officers are comprised of the finest officers, supervisors, administrative, and support person that can be found. Now therefore, we the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors call upon the citizens of Rockbridge County to observe the week of May 12 through May 18, 2024, as Police Week, during which all of our residents may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who, by their faithful and loyal devotions, their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to the communities, and in so doing, have established themselves as invaluable and enduring reputation of preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And we urge all citizens to take time to thank the law enforcement officers for their important service they provide to us all. We further call upon the citizens of Rockbridge to observe Wednesday, May 15, as Police Officers' Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice to their community and have become disabled in the performance of their duties. And let us recognize and pay respect to their survivors of the fallen, and to cause the flag to be flown at half-mast in remembrance, adopted May 13, 19, or May 13, 2024. Madam Chairman, I move that we adopt this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Chair Ayers. Would, would, could we get a picture with the gentleman present here?
Absolutely.
Come on, Nick.
My dog can't be in the middle, so you guys may have to move over here.
Right here. No, I think you're, but that's okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll now welcome citizen comments. When your name is called, please address the board at the podium, starting, stating your first and last name and magisterial district. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. There's a timer on the table for your convenience. Is there anyone signed up to speak in person? Again, this is not for the public meeting. This would be.
No, ma'am. The three people who have signed up on this sheet, I think inadvertently signed along sheet, their topic is that.
Okay. Anybody online?
No, ma'am.
Approval of the April 22, 2024 Work Session and Regular Meeting Minutes and May 6, 2024 Budget Public Hearing Minutes. Does the board have any questions or comments about the draft minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes?
So move. Second.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes.
Madam Chair, I also will make a motion to approve the May 6 Budget Public Hearing Minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day. Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes. Consideration of County Appropriation Resolution. Mr. Harrison.
Yes. Before you is a resolution authorizing appropriations and the payments of bills for this period. The amount of bills for this period amounts to $733,007.05. Additional general fund appropriations total $74,936. And additional capital projects fund appropriations total $14,500. Included in your packets is the revenue and expense reports and the balance sheet through April 30, 2024. All the revenue and expenditures are in line with the estimates for the budget this time of year. Sales tax, 83% of the fiscal year has passed. Sales tax remains on track at 82% or 3.4 million. Mills tax continues to exceed expectations at 2.6 million or 96% of the estimate. And the lodging tax is still down at 67% or 1.2 million. And also included in your packets is the spreadsheet showing your, your comparisons.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Are there any questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to adopt the proposed resolution?
So move. Second.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day. And I vote yes. 2025 Budget Adoption and Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Harrison.
Yes, before you, as you were here, where we conducted, the board conducted this public hearing last week, no changes have been made to the budget that was presented to you, and no changes were made to the CIP that was presented to you at the public hearing. The public, the notice and the budget is posted and has been posted on the county's website, and will continue to be posted there. Real estate taxes remain unchanged at 61 cents. Personal property taxes remain unchanged at 425. Though business personal property is being lower to 425. Machinery and tools remains unchanged at 255. The general fund budget is balanced at $64,471,724. The capital construction fund is budgeted at $801,875. Capital purchases fund at $479,600. And the ARPA fund at $4,192,253. And the school division operating fund is budgeted at $36,833,592. The cafeteria fund at $1,574,762. The school debt fund at $3,549,400. And the school capital fund is budgeted at $4,272,000. And again, the, with the FY 2025 through 2029 CIP, no changes were made as presented. And typically in the past, those have been two separate motions, one for the budget and one for the CIP.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. There any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a couple of comments. I was glad we were able to put together a budget with no increases in taxes. However, especially since it's Emergency Medical Services Week, I think it's important to note that we added three captains positions in this budget. And we're adding some full-time positions up in Fairfield. But that doesn't cover the whole county. And while we were able to do it this year, I just want people to remember that this is a basic service that we need to be providing all citizens of the county. And if we're going to meet that obligation, either we got to increase revenues, or we got to increase taxes, and it's going to be substantial. So you've got a year. So don't act surprised this time next year if we bring you a budget that calls for a significant increase in real estate taxes so that we can provide the same basic emergency services to everyone in the county.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, is there a motion to adopt the FY 25 budget?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Is there a motion to adopt the FY 2025 to 2029 CIP?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes. Resolution to extend the real estate tax payment deadline. Mr. Harrison.
Yes. When we adopted the budget calendar for FY 25, we extended the dates a little bit in hope of the state adopting its budget in a timely manner, unlike in 2023. That hasn't happened again, but it did push us behind, which affects the tax payment dates for our citizens. And so the recommendation is to, before you is a resolution extending the first installment of real estate taxes for calendar year 2024, from June 5, 2024, to Friday, June 21, 2024. The resolution has been approved by the county attorney.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Mr. Harrison? If not, is there a motion?
So move.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Move on to appointments. Ms. Flint is willing to, for the, sorry.
Number nine. We're on the surplus property policy.
Thank you. I apologize. Let me go up to there. Mr. Dryden, can you help us out with that?
Yes, so, as you may be aware, that every time that, up until now, every time that the county needs to surplus any of the property, we need to bring a resolution to the Board of Supervisors. And if for some reason we put on govdocs.gov, sell, govdeals, to sell it and it doesn't sell, then we have to come back a resolution to get permission to dispose it by gift to charity or even just to throw it away. We did some research to see how other municipalities deal with this, and found that most municipalities actually grant the, to their county administrator or, or other, or the town manager, the right to determine surplus property up to a certain amount. And so we feel that this would probably be a better use of time and better way of handling the county property if we were to develop a surplus property disposal policy, which will allow the county administrator to make decisions up to $5,000 on disposal of that particular property. And so we brought this to the board for their consideration. This is copied, this one is copied after several other municipalities, particularly this Christianburg Town. This is very similar to one they have, and similar to several other ones also. I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
Gentlemen, any questions? Mr. Dryden.
It looks very thorough as usual.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yeah.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now we will move on to a.
Sorry, ma'am. One, one comment, I wanted to get in on number 10, where we removed that.
Yes, we did.
I just wanted the public to know that, I don't think that's being permanently removed.
Oh, absolutely.
We are addressing that situation, but due to some further findings, thanks to the Commonwealth, again, we need to be able to dial in our, our language to make sure we're covering exactly what we want to cover. So I, I think that may come back in the future.
Thank you. Appointments. SVP Brandy Flint, term expires on June 30, 2024. She is willing to be reappointed to the Shenandoah Valley Partnership. There are no other applications for consideration at this time. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion to reappoint Ms. Flint?
Make a motion to reappoint Ms. Flint. She does excellent job representing Rockbridge County.
Thank you.
Second that with keeping her on, she's a board member there, that's good.
Yes, we're all delighted. Can you tell? Okay. So let's see, I think it's Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day. And I vote yes. Library Board of Directors, Gail Hustle, term expires June 30, 2024. Ms. Hustle has reached her term limit on the Library Board of Directors. There is one application, to fill this application. B Harper Donahoe has submitted an application for the board's consideration. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Donahoe to Library Board of Directors?
So move.
Okay. Mr. Lewis.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Day. Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And I vote yes. MSA. Mr. Lewis is willing to be reappointed to the Maury Service Authority. There are no other applications. Sorry, there's some typos here. I cannot type those. The ink is, is for board's consideration. Is there any discussion for Mr. Lewis's term?
Move to approve.
Okay, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes. The Social Services Board, Tony McFadden's term expires on July 31, 2024. He's willing to be reappointed to the Department of Social Services. There are no applications for the board's consideration.
Move to approve, Mr. McFadden.
Thank you. Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes. 911 Board. Mickey Cochran is willing to be reappointed to the Rockbridge Regional Communications Center Management Board, otherwise known as the 911 Board. There are no other applications for the board's consideration. Is there a motion?
So move.
All right. Mr. Day, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes. Finally, EDA. Ms. Harris resigned from office earlier this year. Her seat on the Economic Development Authority has remained vacant. The board has received two applications for consideration to this position. The applications were from Ben Day and Thomas Van Diver. Is there any discussion of the two applications?
Yes, two very good applicants. However, I believe Buffalo does not have a representative on the board, and for that reason, I'd like to nominate Mr. Van Diver.
Thank you. Any, any other? Okay, a second. If there's no other discussion on that, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes. Mr. McFadden is willing to be reappointed to the Mountain Gateway Community College Board of Directors. No other applications are on at this time. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. McFadden?
I'm going to reappoint him.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Two minutes. Did any, everyone have any time, have time to review the monthly staff reports? And do you have any questions or comments that you'd like to make?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
All righty, Mr. McDaniel. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day. Mr. Lewis. And I vote yes. We have one minute before the meeting, the public hearing begins. Second.
There's very few upstairs. Let me check the hallway.
Let me check the hallway.
Like the email and stuff. Mr. Spiden, are you ready?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Hand it to you.
All right. Uh, tonight's, uh, public hearing is associated with a special exception application, uh, applications being made by Louis W. Hamilton, Jr. and Kendra R. Hamilton. Uh, the special, uh, application, special exception application is to develop and operate a special event venue in the agricultural and limited use districts. That's the A-one zoning district. Uh, I thought it'd be beneficial to give a somewhat of a broad overview of the zoning, uh, in Irish Creek Road. Uh, this map shows, uh, the zoning of the Irish Creek Road. If you don't mind, I'll turn my pointer into a printer or into a pointer, excuse me. Uh, Irish Creek is further identified as Route six oh three and is shown in yellow on the attached map. Uh, Irish Creek consists of, Irish Creek Road consists of thirteen, approximately thirteen point eight nine miles from South River Road. South River Road is further identified as six oh eight to the Blue Ridge Parkway. So again, I'm gonna move my thing over here if you don't mind. Uh, again, Irish Creek Road is highlighted or, or shown in yellow going from, uh, South River Road here to the Blue, Blue Ridge Parkway up there. Uh, Irish Creek, of course, meanders along Irish Creek Road. To briefly resume, uh, review the zoning of the area, the first approximately one mile of Irish Creek Road, uh, is identified here, uh, is, uh, as you can see, it's in the white. Uh, the white is identified as agricultural and general use zoning districts. That's the A-two zoning district. Uh, soon before the bridge, uh, the first bridge you get to, I believe it is, uh, the National Forest starts at this portion of the road. The National Forest is located on both sides of the road. The National Forest is shown on darker green, uh, on the map in front of you and, uh, is located in the Conservation Zoning District. That would be the C-one zoning district. Uh, as you head up the mountain in the areas that are privately owned, uh, the privately owned areas are in the agricultural and limited use districts. That's the A-two zoning districts. These areas are shown in the lighter green. Uh, so again, you can see, uh, we'll go to the next slide. Uh, this is A-one zoning district. Uh, so to recap, the forest portion of Irish Creek Road is in the A-two district. Then after, uh, the A-two portion going up the mountain, the National Forest is zoned conservation, C-one, and the property, uh, private property is zoned A-one, uh, agricultural limited use district. You'll also see on this map, uh, there's a, a portion of Irish Creek, uh, that's outlined in red, uh, located right here, that line in red. Uh, this area is approximately four miles from the intersection of South River Road and Irish Creek Road. The area that is outlined is a pocket of private property that consists of approximately ninety-five point four-six-five acres, that's per tax records, and surrounded as shown, uh, by the National Forest. Uh, this is that same, uh, same area, uh, including an aerial photo. The red portion is, is the same as the previous slide. The red outline is the border of the National Forest and the green lines, the internal green lines are parcels, uh, of private ownership in the area. Uh, this area consists of, uh, nineteen parcels totaling again ninety-five point four-six-five acres. That's per tax records and comprised of eleven total landowners. Parcel ranges in this area ranges from one point two-two acres to twenty-three point three-eight-three acres per tax records. Uh, fourteen of the parcels are under five acres, three of the parcels are between five and ten acres, and two parcels are over ten acres with the average size of private ownership in this area of five point zero-two. This man, this map shows the, uh, Hamilton's total land area, uh, outlined in orange. Uh, the Hamilton's holdings are a portion of the property located on the east side of Irish Creek Road. The Hamilton's own five parcels, again, outlined in orange. The five parcels total, uh, a total of twenty-one point nine-four-five acres per tax records. Uh, the Hamilton parcels range from one point two-two-seven acres to eight point twelve acres, again, per tax records. Currently, three of the parcels have a single family dwelling on them that are utilized for short-term rentals. One of those parcels also includes a glamping tent that is utilized as a short-term rental. The glamping tent was previously issued a special exception permit as a campground. Uh, two of the Hamilton parcels are vacant land. Now to the application itself, uh, two of the five properties that the Hamiltons own are associated with tonight's application for a special exception permit. Uh, the properties that are included in the special event application are identified as tax map numbers sixty-five dash A dash six, consisting of eight point twelve acres per tax records, and sixty-five dash A dash six C, consisting of five point one-nine acres per tax records. Both, both parcels total thirteen point three-one acres, again, per tax records. The applicants, Louis W. Hamilton, Jr. and Kendra R. Hamilton, uh, sixteen forty-five Maggiore Avenue, Buena Vista, Virginia two-four-four-five-zero, and attendants this evening to represent the project have made an application for a special, uh, exception permit to develop and operate a special event venue. Uh, per submitted plans, the proposed development plans includes a new bridge for access to the special event venue, a vent shelter be served by well and drain field, and associated parking for the proposed vent, event venue. The properties are owned by Louis W. Hamilton, Jr. and Kendra R. Hamilton, and are located off of Black Bear Trail. Black Bear Trail is a private road on the east side of Irish Creek Road, approximately four point zero-six miles east of the intersection of South River Road and Irish Creek Road. The properties are located in agricultural and limited use districts. Per section six oh three of the county of Rock, excuse me, six oh three point oh three, six oh two point oh three dash thirteen, excuse me, of the county of Land, uh, Rockbridge Land Development Regulations, special events are a use by special exception in the A-one zoning district. A portion of sixty-five dash A dash six and a portion of sixty-five dash A dash six C are located within the one-hundred-year special flood hazard area. Per the Planning Commission's recommendation, on April tenth, twenty twenty-four, the Planning Commission held its public hearing and has recommended approval of the special exception with the following conditions. Number one, the permit is limited to no more than fifty special events per year. Number two, substantial compliance with the concept plan prepared by the applicant titled Irish Creek Venue Pavilion Construction Layout and Overview. They did February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. That, that information, of course, was included in the, a package of information, uh, on the board docs website. Uh, number three, the events will be limited to a maximum of one hundred and seventy-five attendees with no more than seventy-five vehicles on-site for events. The event manager, managers shall be on-site during all special events. Number four, uh, all site activities will be concluded by nine P.M. on Monday through Thursdays and ten P.M. on Friday and Saturday with no special events being held on Sunday. Uh, number five, adequate off-street parking facilities and traffic controls will be provided. No parking along Irish Creek Road, again, six oh three. A stop sign shall be installed on the property at the entry of Irish Creek Road. Number six, alcoholic beverages will not be self-served. Number seven, all trash will be taken directly to the landfill and not the county collection center or county green boxes. Number eight, any amplified music must be within enclosed structure. Number nine, loud lighting shall be in compliance with section thirteen oh three, uh, point oh three, general lighting requirements and section thirteen oh three oh four, general design requirements of the county of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. Number ten, no aerial fireworks or gun salute shall be permitted. No open air fires shall be permitted by attendees. And final condition, as recommended by the Planning Commission, uh, number eleven, approval contingent upon county building department, fire and rescue emergency management, Virginia Department of Transportation, and health department approvals. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over to, uh, Mr. Mrs. Hamilton to review the application and go over additional details of the application.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Good evening.
One thing I figured out through this process since the planning commission, you guys have got a tough job. One way or another, somebody's been disagreeing. And, uh, I called each one of you personally and invited you to our property, and I seen some, I didn't see some. And all we can ask of you is give us a fair shake. We've been in business thirty-plus years. I've lived in Rockbridge County fifty-four years, come this December in the same driveway. I've owned property on Irish Creek for over sixteen years, we have. And I can remember as a little boy standing there when the road was gravel and looking at the pond de rosa, which was a sign over the original bridge. And for some reason, I wanted to own that property, and now we do. Um, y'all really hit on something. I made a note of it, it really made a lot of sense, was May Business Appreciation Month. And you mentioned small business people. It's been a rough ride. It's made it, you know, times that we said, why should we do this? Why shouldn't we sell out and quit working and employing people when you can't hire people now? And you paying big wages? We rode a ride. And we appreciate your consideration. Uh, I made a comment to every other one of you. If this is God's will, it'll be. If it ain't, he's got a bigger plan for us and we'll figure it out. Anything, so.
With that being said, we just like the opportunity to use our property the way we see fit. Sure. We'd like to be able to use our property as we see fit. We feel it's our right, uh, we pay taxes, uh, we employ people. We feel that it's an opportunity for Irish Creek to be shown off for the beauty that it is, and we only want to promote that. Um, a couple of things to kind of touch on that I know are touchy, um, points with the community around us. Um, I know there's concern about the traffic. Um, we're only four miles up Irish Creek. Um, there are multiple venues without, throughout the county that are much further distances out, much worse roads, in my opinion. Um, with that being said, we will follow any rules that are put in place. And, you know, why couldn't there be a sign or some type of signage that we put up at the bottom of the road that says, um, event four miles up, please travel safely and pay attention to the traffic? Uh, something along that line. Um, you know, we plan to have all of our parking right on our property. It won't even be seen. Um, the venue itself won't be able to be seen from the road. Uh, it's, it's secluded. We're doing that in order to not bother our neighbors. Um, this is meant to be a joyous place, a place that people make memories, um, that they, um, come together to see loved ones get married or have a corporate retreat, that type of thing. It's, it's not a party, per se. It'll be well organized and well managed. Um, we will follow all the ABC rules that are there, um, as we do in our restaurant, as we do in catering when we're off-site at other places. And we just like the opportunity to, to do that. Do you guys have any questions for us?
I'd like to add a couple of things. And Mr. Slaton just hit on a lot of them with all of the, uh, restrictions, one hundred and seventy-five people, seventy-five vehicles. We are willing, let me back up and say, we've been in the paper the last three weeks, thirty years in business, when he made the paper, I don't think one time, much less three weeks in a row, I'm kind of crap. So with that said, one of the things in the paper said that we would be a three hundred and sixty-five day-a-year operation. Well, that's false. Matter of fact, the exact math is thirteen point six-nine-nine percent. We're willing to make a major investment in this community and pay you guys taxes on it, us guys, because I'm a county member too. We can only operate our facility less than fourteen percent of the time. And a lot of people, we've had people reach out to us. We could have packed this courtroom tonight, or not courtroom, that's what it feels like. We could have packed this room tonight, and we chose not to. We had friends reach out. It's been pretty humbling seeing some of the emails that people got in our life that we didn't ask to stand up for us. Because if we can't stand up before you guys, we ain't done something right. We feel like we've done something right. So with all that said, it's been a lot of misleading. And I want to mention our closest neighbor, the Conners. They're not against our venue, they have concerns over the bridge. You got a letter in your pocket?
Yes, sir.
And I gave Ricky Connor and, and, and his wife the assurance that we would get V-Doc back up, and they would be part of that, making a decision, angling the bridge right where the lights didn't hit. And I think we've got some room to play there. So we've tried to be a good neighbor. All our neighbors has got every right to their opinion. We have ours, we don't fault them for that. But I think it's been a lot of people misled and signed petitions, and I could sit here and be specific, but I won't be, um, people that we've had come up to us and say things. But, um, you know, what we are doing, I feel like, is economic development. You know, people come, we, we've had a lot of people at our cabins the past couple of weeks for graduations. They stop at gas stations, they buy gas, they go to Walmart, they buy groceries, they stop at restaurants, and they buy food. We contribute to our community with what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Chris, anything else from you?
No, ma'am. But I believe there's a few people upstairs, but no one's signed up to speak.
All right.
Uh, Chris, can I, can I ask a question on, on, is that seventy-five cars? Does that include the staff vehicles or is, or is that seventy-five guest cars?
Or attendees, and so I would interpret that seventy-five guest cars. That would not include.
So that's seventy-five cars for attendees.
For attendees, is the way it's currently written, and that would be interpreted not to include, you know, uh, the music, the caterers, that type of thing.
And the, the other question, we did our due diligence and everything was advertised properly prior to?
That's correct.
Okay.
Uh, let me just also, for those of you wondering if we read, and, and Mr. Hamilton, I, I did go up to your side. I didn't see you, but that, Mr. Day and I, and, and Chris went up to, to your side, and I believe everyone has, just, just so that you know that. We've also, um, received, um, letters from the following people. William Mule, Justin Grant, Karen Moore, Ashley Painter, Terry Fullwinder, Rick Hamilton, Thomas and Jennifer Tomlin, Larry and Eloise, Eloise, Staton, Pete Davis, Tony Tyree, Wayne Carter, Eric White, Gene Oliver, Cindy Moore, Michelle Staton, and Richard and Robert Connor. Now, um, I will open the public hearing. Those of you who wish to speak will be called to the podium in the order which they have signed up, uh, on this signup sheet. When your name is called, please address the board from the podium and state your first and last name and magisterial district. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. If they are representing, if you are representing a group, you may be allotted an additional two minutes and must identify the members of the group you're representing. Please address all comments to the board of supervisors and not the audience. Thank you. All right, we will, um, we will, we will begin.
Uh, first up is Danny Vance, followed by Robert Lynn.
My name's, uh, Denny Vance, and I live in Pearfield in the Walkers Creek District. And, uh, my association with Irish Creek is I grew up there for a long time, and my family owns the, um, are the Tomlins that live across the creek. So I consider it like our family farm, and I spent a lot of time up there attending to my daddy's grave and, and just pitching in. Now, uh, first off, I'd like to say that the Hamiltons is always really good to my daddy, and I always appreciate that. So there's nothing wrong with the Hamilton's, uh, character. Uh, we're just having a difference of opinion on this venue. And, uh, my aunt, uh, Georgia Pippin, she couldn't be here today. Uh, she was at a business meeting in Richmond, and she just asked me to speak for her as someone that is semi-retired. And whenever she, she has spent most of her life as a single mother and out in the business world, and she located to, uh, Irish Creek, as most of my family has, uh, for the thinking that they wanted to retire up there. So I understand the economic, uh, that Lou and him contribute to the community, but, uh, please consider the retirees, and they're coming at the end of their career. So they've already paid, uh, their dues in society. Now they're just looking for a peaceful way out. So, uh, Georgia had asked for me to speak for her, and she would just like to bring up the retirees, the semi-retired, and I, I guess the difficulties that they'll be experiencing with the venue directly across the creek from them. So, uh, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Vance.
Robert C. Lynn, followed by Ran, uh, Ron Blackwood.
My name is Al Robert Christian Lynn. I've spent thirty-three years on Irish Creek. I grew up there. I enjoy the tranquility, going fishing and hunting there. And I'm completely opposed to this idea. And I'm completely opposed to this idea.
Okay, sir.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Ron Blackwood, followed by Pete Davis.
Hello, my name is Ron Blackwood. And I'd like to, first off, start by saying, I really appreciate what the Hamiltons have done along Irish Creek. It's really pretty. If you've been out there, you see it. And as I drive by, so far, what they've done is really nice. But I can't support what they're doing or what they're trying to do moving forward with this special use permit. A little background on me, I'm a actual developer of property, infrastructure land. I have single-family home development going right now, student, purpose-built student housing, commercial property. I'm all for development. That's how I make a living, pro-development, paying people tax dollars, this, that and the other. But I would like to say is that this is not the place for development. And if anybody's been out there, they can see. I personally was coming back and just thinking about this right before I got to, I think they're calling it Irish Creek Crossing. I was coming back from Lowe's the other day and I had two locals on my side of the road and almost hit me head on. And that was just a trip back from Lowe's. That's my concern. We purchased this property up in there to live. I'm not retired yet, but I'm getting close to it and it's peaceful, it's quiet. There's no cell service. There is no, if you don't have your maps loaded, you're not getting out of there. If you don't know your way, there's three points, three points of ingress. And the ingress is there at fifty-six and of course, you've got the parkway. But you also have Nettle Creek, which is not conducive. And a lot of people come through sixty up to that road and come in that way under the parkway. You have the parkway, of course, then you have the South River. So real quick, any special use exemptions in Irish Creek corridor and George Washington National Forest area result in adverse impacts on Irish Creek community, roads, wildlife and natural environment. It's inconsistent with the intended land use for the area. It's against a lot of our local community. And also it's inconsistent with the land use regulations and comprehensive plan. I've been on a comprehensive plan as a chair before and we cite out property and we redesign land uses for appropriate. And I think this venue being a great thing in it, but in a place that's already zoned appropriately for a venue like this. What I'd like to say also is, you know, I'm pro-business development, but I'm not in the Irish Creek area. It's not a place where you should have a facility of people coming in and going that don't know where they're at. It's not safe. And for those reasons, I respectfully ask for you, the board directors, to vote no on this special exception use. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Pete Davis, followed by Tony Tyree.
Pete Davis from the Cars Creek District. Thanks for the opportunity to talk. My connection to Irish Creek is that I've been going up there since the floods of sixty-nine and fishing and hunting for fifty-five years. The characteristic of the area is undeveloped, primitive. The road is not good. It's topographically limiting. And I'm worried that dropping seventy-five or a hundred fifty or three hundred cars on the weekend, depending on how you count that, is going to create some danger to the public. We've already had some fatalities on the road up there. And I think that it is not an appropriate area to drop that much traffic. And that's really the big externality. While the benefits will certainly go to the people that develop the property, the externality, which is the public risk to public safety, is going to be spread out among everybody that goes there and everybody that lives there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Tyree, followed by, I think it's a Wiley Conkrin.
My name is Tony Tyree. I live in the South River District on Irish Creek Road, but a stone's throw across the road from where this thing's going. And Mr. Curtis Clark, who's eighty-nine, and Mrs. Ashley McConnell, who's, I'm not going to reveal her age, called me yesterday and asked me to speak for them too, and they are definitely opposed to this thing. Everybody that comes up here is going to tell you how bad the road is. It's windy, it's blind curves, there's no lighting, there's no lines. And it's just going to get worse and put more traffic on it. Now, this is going to be a large, complex venue and it's going to be shoehorned into about twelve or thirteen acres, which is not enough for a buffer zone. It's not enough for any kind of safety zone. The other venues in the A-one district, but there's only one, that's House Mountain Inn and it's on a thousand acres. And all the other ones in the county are on generally hundreds of acres. This is a very small area to try to put something like this in and it's not safe. And it's not going to be a good thing at all. The groundwater issue is very concerning because we don't know how much water is going to be pumped out of the ground to satisfy the sanitary needs of thousands of people a year. And every bit of that's going to have to go back into the ground and septic bleaches every drop of it. And we're worried that our wells will go dry. And in the state of Virginia, if somebody drills a well next to you and yours goes dry, you have no recourse. You're out on your own. If that happens, everybody in that neighborhood is just going to be ruined. A neighbor started, brought eight or nine people there who have wells that are going to be totally ruined if that happens. The property values in the entire corridor, South River, Irish Creek are going to be adversely impacted. There's no way out of it. But the value of our land is in the privacy, the peace and quiet and seclusion that we have. And this is going to take all that away, every bit of it. And and those of us in the locality, what eight or nine people were going to go by the front of this. There's going to be a lot of noise. This is a little small valley shaped like a bowl. The sound just echoes around in it. And so all the lighting, it's going to take a pile of exterior lighting to keep that place safe, just people walking around. In the parking areas, the bridges, everything like that. This could be noise pollution, light pollution, traffic. The excavation and construction of this thing is going to take months and months. That's going to be a nightmare itself. And we have a petition up here, y'all have?
Yes, sir.
Four hundred and eighty-six signatures on it, all these people. And most of these people back here adamantly oppose this thing, as do I. And we ask for your vote.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I apologize, Kent. Thank you. Followed by Betty Tyree.
I'm sorry, sir.
My name is Wiley Conkrin and I'm here in opposition of special use petition before you today. Together with my brother and sister and myself, we own two hundred acres on Nettle Creek in Irish Gap. It's been the Conkrin family ninety years and our children and grandchildren have traveled up and down Irish Creek for generations. The road up Irish Creek was designed and built to service Irish Creek and Nettle Creek community. It was not designed for or intended for the use of commercial traffic. To unleash two hundred and fifty people on this road and the community every weekend is unconscionable. The Irish Creek area is not slated for economic development in the near future. This business, the Hamilton family proposed, it benefits one family to the detriment of the entire community of Irish Creek. For the sake of science, a vote no.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Betty Tyree, followed by Rick Marks.
I'm Betty Tyree. I live up on Irish Creek, across from the venue, right up on a hill from it. And when they have things going on over there, we could hear them. They burned a bunch of trash a few weeks ago. For two days, we couldn't go in our yard because the smoke was up on a hill above us. I would like to express my disappointment about this. The lights, the dangerous road is really dangerous because we've been up for thirty-seven years ourselves. So we know how dangerous that road is. We worry about the water. All that water coming off the mountain is coming down, all right? It goes to the river or the creek, you want to call it. So we just really enjoy our peace. That's the reason we moved there because that's our retirement home. We lived in Beunavest and couldn't stand it. So we moved to the mountains so we'd have a place. And now this, this is really upsetting everybody because we love seeing people come up and fish, the kids, you know? They got their life too up there, just like we do. So I hope this goes through. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Richard, excuse me, Rick Marks, followed by Clifford.
Madam Chair, before my time starts, I wonder if I could prevail upon your good graces to ask for an extra minute or two. I'm trying to help a number of my neighbors, including Rick Martin and a few others. I'm wondering if I could just have a bit more time.
If, if you, who will you be speaking for? Who are you representing?
For Rick Martin and myself, would that be all right?
Do you have that? Yes, that will, five minutes.
Five minutes. Thank you so much. Good evening, my name is Rick Marks. I live off Irish Creek and along with nearly five hundred of my neighbors, composed to the special exception, which will damage the character of our neighborhood and create unsafe traffic conditions. Unlike the Hamiltons, I actually live in the affected area on the most direct unpaved road from the venue to and from the parkway. This A-one district is peaceful, safe, traffic is minimal, there's zero light pollution. And a scenic natural area with two beautiful creeks, one being a designated native trout stream that serves as a spawning tributary for the entire watershed. The land development regulations, I think, are clear. The intent of the A-one is to protect and maintain natural areas, scenic resources and watersheds and to preserve the rural nature of the landscape. And any uses such as this commercial development are not compatible and not encouraged within A-one districts. The oversized septic system is designed to handle commercial expansion. And that's another indication of the concerns we have about this ever-expanding venue. The large septic field is a stone's throw from Irish Creek. How long before we see negative water quality impacts and impacts of this local food source? Especially for folks who may be elderly or food-challenged. The proposed commercial site is near property posted by a federally recognized Indian tribe, one of only eleven recognized by the state. I do not speak for the Monica Nation, but let me offer this. I know your oath of office is to follow the U.S. Constitution. There is a federal trust responsibility issued pursuant to the Constitution for legal and moral obligations to protect treaty rights, lands, assets, resources, individual tribal member well-being. I'm not sure by law you can negatively impact or devalue this property. The area dumpsters are already overwhelmed and resolving this issue is currently one of your strategic priorities. Monitoring use restrictions is unenforceable and will not help us. As a volunteer in VDOT's Adopt a Highway program, and I guess one of your non-compensated county employees, I can tell you, please trust me, more development, more vehicles means more trash for our community. I'm going to close with this. I respect people's rights to do what they want on their property within reason. Say my neighbor wants to put a chicken coop up for access to fresh eggs. I have no problem with that. But say that same neighbor wants to put in a commercial chicken operation, then I think we would probably all agree that that crosses the line and where you would have to step in to protect my rights. The land use regulations clearly state balance is achieved by reasonable restrictions on property rights. All of us that live in the vicinity of this commercial site will suffer, be it from compromised safety due to increased traffic volume or drunk drivers on dangerous roads, noise, lights, trash, water quality, air pollution, fire danger and the like. But here's the thing, and for you all, I'm not sure how you get around this. For the cluster of homes in close proximity to this venue, approving this exception is literally a taking of their property. You will be denying their rights. You'll be denying their rights to pursue happiness and to live it safely and peace and quiet on their land and have their properties devalued or their taxes increased because a developer who does not live there wants to profit off the beauty of our natural forest community. I think the only answer here is a firm and justifiable no. Thank you for your time, for the extra time and for your service to the county.
Thank you very much.
It's Clifford Tomlin, Lee, followed by Luke Tyree.
My name's Clifford Tomlin. Me and my wife moved up on Irish Creek forty-some year ago. It was a nice, peaceful, quiet. We wanted to retire there. Well, now we're retired. Now he wants to go and mess up my retirement. What gives him the right? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, this isn't a popularity contest, so please contain yourself so we can concentrate on what's being.
And also remember to just speak to us. We're not engaging other people in the audience. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Luke Tyree. I'm not very good at public speaking, so.
It's okay, take your time. You're fine.
My family's been up on Irish Creek since before it was Irish Creek. I'm a member of the Monica Indian Nation. I do not speak for them, speak for myself and for a few family members and how that goes. My third great-grandfather is buried Clark Gap Cemetery. My fifth great-grandmother is buried in Mount Nettle. I started a nonprofit just to protect the land up there. My family and the nonprofit have about two hundred acres there. We pay our taxes. I work with the U.S. Forest Service to protect the land up there as well. And all the time that I've lived up on Irish Creek and in all the years that my family's been up there, it's kind of rare to see this much of our community come together for anything. And we all have our differences. We all appreciate what it is to live out there and the beauty of the place. And I have never had anything against the Hamiltons and still don't. But as a concept, the idea of developing a place that has somehow through all the expansion, county and through the rest of Virginia, this place has remained. And we've all lived there and we've all paid the taxes, we've all paid our dues. We've lost access to grocery stores being close to us. We have to travel in order to get rid of our own trash. We, we have issues with public service and as you spoke about before, emergency services as well. So we pay the price for that. But of all my neighbors and all the positive interactions and negative interactions, in the end, what I realize is all of us came together for this. I came here because my neighbors showed up on my driveway, which never happens. And they came there to ask for my help, so I showed up for them. Because I hope they do the same for us if it happens, so. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Kathy, excuse me, Kathy Tomlin, Tomlin, followed by Eric White.
My name is Catherine Tomlin. I live four miles up by Irish Creek. Been there since nineteen eighty-seven. I love it with all my heart. My, my farm is less than thirty acres, but we love it there. Our biggest concern, most immediate concern about all of this is that the wells on Irish Creek, nine times out of ten probably, if you drill a well, you're going to hit bad water. It's either going to be iron or it's going to, it's, and all the filtering in the world doesn't do any good. We tried that early on. Doesn't work. And it's the same way all over Irish Creek, as I understand it. We live in an area that's an aquifer, okay? So thank God we have a spring that we enclose. But it's an aquifer. So if you overuse an aquifer and according to the USGS, if you overuse, overpump a well that is from an aquifer, your well can go dry and your neighbor's wells can go dry if you overuse. That terrifies me because I can't drill a well because I don't, I get bad water. It's not like you could just do filtering and it takes care of it, doesn't. So if all of a sudden we didn't have good water, I, I guess we'd have to move. And it would certainly destroy the property values. And another thing I wanted to mention is that their original proposal said three hundred and sixty-five days a year. I don't think we could bear even even a month of it. So I hope you'll, you'll say no to this exemption. And it's nothing personal against the Hamiltons. I like them, they're good neighbors, but this is just too much.
Thank you, Ms. Tomlin.
Eric White, followed by Christie and Garfield Vance, one or the other, I should say.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Eric White. My wife Vicki and I have owned property on Irish Creek for 40 years. And this, we recently built a home and this is part of our retirement. I'd certainly echo all the comments that other retirees have made and anyone who supports the rights of people to retire in a way which reflects their appreciation of the surrounding area. I'd like to read to you a comment that one of the board members made. "I would hate to think that I live within sight of it, knowing that this was going to go in because it will affect property values." "The applicant can't tell me this won't affect property values in the neighborhood, therefore I am against it." These words were spoken in connection with the denial of an application for a solar energy company's special use permit. And they also appear in a lawsuit that's recently been filed against the board in Rockbridge County Circuit Court. The solar company alleged that the application in the record before the board clearly established that the property values would not be adversely impacted by the proposed project. The application here, filed by the Hamiltons, doesn't even mention property values. It doesn't mention the recreational activities up and down the creek. It doesn't mention the impact on traffic, safety, water use and pollution. This venue unfortunately will not improve anything about the quality of life on Irish Creek. Theirs is a business model. I understand it. I get it. They're probably very good at it, but it is expansive in nature. And it's one of the reasons why I asked the board in an email why you would even consider substantial compliance. To even let something like this in would require the strictest of compliance to make sure that we don't get into the creep of what can happen with business. I live about a mile up the road and my property value will be negatively impacted by the proposed venue. We have spent a lot of money on our property, improving our home, and we're not the only ones who have done so. And by doing so, we are also contributing to the economic development of this county and the economic health of this county. And we're also happy to pay higher taxes through higher assessments with the expectation that you will help preserve our neighborhoods and also provide us with the EMS services that we so desperately need. I would urge you to follow your mission statement to protect our neighborhoods and deny this application. And before I close, I do want to compliment the Hamiltons. They have done a wonderful job of improving that property. I cannot tell you how many times my wife and I have driven up that road admiring the park-like na-, you know, nature of what they have done. But, and they've wanted, and they want, express the goal that they want their daughter to be married on the property, a wonderful goal. But their daughter can get married on that property. They don't need this board to give them a bridge. They don't need this board to give them a permit to build a structure so they can invite all their friends. The only thing they don't get out of is a tax deduction. But that's the kind of activity we want. People who are celebrating family, people who are celebrating nature, and people who are not imposing business models on those unnecessarily. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristy Vance, followed by Garfield Vance.
My name is Kristy Vance. I am in the, I live in the Walker's Creek District, but my connection to Irish Creek goes back to when I was born. My family land is the piece of property that is the last piece before the road turns to dirt. My cousin, who is the main property owner now of the family land, is also here, you know, to try to, you know, stop, you know, impede this a little bit. So I agree with everything. I can't say anything anymore than, I'm not supposed to, I know I'm not supposed to, but so my former fellow neighbors that have come up and spoke, I can't, I can't be any more eloquent and more precise on the details than these developers have spoken. I would like to also include that while there are some other big wedding venues that they, that I'm sure the Hamiltons are kind of going on precedence, you know, out in the rural areas of the county. But these other venues, you know, we want to make sure we keep track of the Chesapeake Bay watershed, which it would definitely impact their water, you know, their venue would definitely impact that. These other venues, you know, there's no national forest, there's no parkway, you know, there's not a stocked trout stream. None of that's going on at these other venues. Just right here on Irish Creek. And I'm friends with Lou and Kendra. I like them a lot. I really do. Our families are friends and they're hardworking people. But this just isn't the right spot for what they want to do for this, for this part of the business. And I hope respectfully ask that you take into consideration these things. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my husband isn't going to speak, but our daughter wants to speak for him.
Certainly.
My name is Isabel Vance. I'm currently living in a Buena Vista, but when I think back on Irish Creek, I think of my childhood. Grew up on South River and that all my family's land up on Irish Creek all my life. I have made a career and an education for myself and interested in wildlife and conservation because of this place. You know, I've just kind of founded my life upon it. I remember being little, being able to observe and study all kinds of endangered species that you wouldn't really think are up there, but there's, the wildlife is unreal if you spend a few minutes up there in the woods alone, you know? I watched a meteor shower up on top of a car in the field up on Irish Creek because that was the best place because there was zero light pollution. And you could see all the stars perfectly, just a little kid. And I remember like it was yesterday. I took a picture for an Appalachian Mountain State Photography Contest for the college down in North Carolina. I took a picture of a deer up on Irish Creek and I actually got an award for it to try and help bring awareness to this place and try to spread about how beautiful it is and everything. And I just, you know, it makes me concerned because I wonder if you let this one venue open and this one slide, does this or does this not open doors to other places gradually being put up there in any empty spot that somebody can find? It's just, you don't find many places like Irish Creek anymore. You really don't, you know, it's secluded, cut off. It's got the right amount of everything, you know, and I just worry that there would be many other places opening in the future, and I believe it would invite some outsiders in that may not necessarily appreciate and respect this land quite like we do. You know, we go out of our way to take care of it. Our whole community does. And you know, you always see hikers, fishers and all that. Like they said, you know, it's quite the communal place, you know, there's a lot of people that enjoy that place all over Rockbridge, even some from out of state I've heard. I just don't think it's right for the water, people, environment, you know? And I wanted to touch on a point that the Hamiltons have brought up about it only being a couple of miles up the creek. Well, um, there's a cross for a fatal car accident in those four miles up the creek. It's got planted right on the side of the hill. You can't miss it when you go up around the curve, so. If that's not a testament to those roads, I really don't know what is. And it's not the only cross on that road either. So I just think that speaks a pretty powerful message. I know I look at that cross every time I drive by and I count my lucky stars. And you know what I do? I be sure to take that road careful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Todd, followed by John King.
Michael Todd, South River District. Zoning is a tool that is used to protect the character of Rockbridge County and for the purpose of directing development to where it's appropriate. Now, when the Hamiltons bought that land, they knew how it was zoned. Zone day one, just like most of the land on Irish Creek. And he kept buying property anyway. And now he's come to you because he wants you to change the rules for him and not for anybody else on the creek. That's why it's a special exception. So I'm not asking you to do anything except uphold the zoning how it is. Thanks.
Thank you. Gentlemen?
John King, followed by Barry Staten.
My name's John King. I've been a landowner on Irish Creek since 1973. I believe the Hamilton proposal simply flies in the face of the traditional use of the creek going back 20,000 years. The Monica Indian Nation, their ancestors lived up there for time immemorial. And in the 1700s and early 1800s, settlers started to move up in there and with all that activity and what's happened since then, there hasn't been a need for a wedding venue on Irish Creek. The, the Hamiltons obviously are careful with what they do. They have done a nice job where they are. But the fact is, is as everyone has said, lots of safety factors here and concerns about pollution, runoff, water. There are a ton of problems. And I think basically we just need to be more sensible about how we use the creek and appreciate more about its incredible uniqueness and the uniqueness of the community, which folks want it the way it is. That's why they're there. And it's pretty simple. I think it ought to stay that way. Thank you.
Barry G. Staten, followed by Kathy Lynn.
I'm Barry Staten. I didn't, I didn't know I was gonna be on the list to speak. Honestly, I didn't. I'm just here for a couple of reasons. I was fishing on Irish Creek last Tuesday. And I come around the curve and there was a gray car that come around the curve on my side of the road and I looked at my speedometer. I had both hands on the wheel, no cell phone because you don't get service anywhere. But I had to take a side ditch practically to keep from getting hit head-on. And I would look down my speedometer. I was going 25 miles per hour. That was last Tuesday when they stocked trout. And I'm not here to say anything negative against the Hamiltons. I like, I've known them all my life and live right up the road from them. But I heard someone say something about 100-year floods. And I published this book about the floods. And if you go back to 69, that's what most of us remember. Where it was a major flood. It was 31 feet. And all that water's coming down South River and Irish Creek, Irish Creek into South River. And it's going somewhere. And a lot of people, I did a lot of research on Irish Creek and South River when I was writing my book. And I got a picture in here of Lyle Robinson. He was the lone survivor of his family. His mom and dad, his whole family got washed off. And I got a picture of the exact spot where he took me and showed me. It was down close to work that that young lady just spoke. It's right down on Irish Creek in South River where they come together. Exact spot where they found his mother. And it's just a very dangerous road. I'm not saying it wouldn't be a good venture to have a business like that, but I mean, like the gentleman said, they knew what the zoning was when they bought that land. So I don't think you change the width or the length of a football field just to get kids to play in. I don't think you do. I think it needs to stay like it is. And I've got all the flood, I've got all the flood levels, the dates, everything in there. November 5th, Labor Day flood, everything. There's pictures of it if you ever want to see it. And if it comes up fast as it did in 85, 95, 96, 69, 72, I mean, it's, it's no getting away from it. You trapped in there and you know, we could lose hundreds of lives. Who knows? Depends on how many people's there. It's tough. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Let's say, what was your district? Is that what you were going?
No, I was just saying he forgot something.
Yeah, could you, were you, were, what's your address, district, whatever? I think that's it. Okay.
Kathy Lynn, followed by Janie Oliver.
Hi, my name is Kathy Lynn. I'm in the South River District. And I live along South River. And sorry, I get nervous. Um, we have, it's a very quiet place and it's going to be more traffic. And I pick up trash, just like some of the other ones were saying, for the county to make it look nice. And just in like a half-mile stretch from my house, I pick up at least every three months, 10 bags of trash. So that is going to cause more trash in the area. The traffic coming up and down South River being people's feed if they're not, don't know where they're going. There's not a lot of service, cell service. So you, it's not like, unless you back up yourself before then, you're not going to know where you're going. My family lives on Irish Creek as well. We enjoy the peace and quiet of the area. And I don't have a, I don't have a problem with them. My husband and I, we went to school with them. So I don't have a problem with them. I just think that that is not the right place for, for this. What they have going on now with their their rental units and keeping the property nice. It is very pretty. I enjoy seeing it the way it is now. But the traffic and going up South, going up Irish Creek, it is a, it's a small road. It has no lines. And like some of the other ones said, the the extra traffic on there, when we're going to visit our family and, and enjoying the creek and the river, it just is going to be more dangerous. So I do oppose that, but I do love their, enjoying their other businesses outside of that area.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn.
Ms. Oliver, followed by Linda Felix.
Hi, I'm here to speak for myself as well as the Garber family in the back. And so I'd like to request for an additional two minutes if I could. Yes. Probably just one, but. So my name is Janie Oliver. I live off of Irish Creek. I'm in the South River District. We are here today to answer one question. Should we allow the construction of a large commercial development on a 13-acre property surrounded by two important things? Residential neighbors who live here because of the seclusion, the tranquility and the peace that living in a rural mountain district brings? And thousands of acres of publicly-owned national forest land that are zoned for conservation, not for commercial development? But there's a deeper underlying question as well that we need to answer today, and that is this. When do the rights of one person need to be restricted in order to protect the rights of others? The very purpose of this board is to evaluate requests exactly like this one, to determine whether or not to grant exceptions. And I stress exception because the Hamiltons are asking to be exempted from the intended and planned uses for this property. When considering exemptions, this body must consider four core issues. The impact on traffic, which we've heard a lot about already. The current and future need for the business. The character of the existing neighborhood. And the effect that this will have on existing property values. It is clear to everyone that allowing this commercial development will dramatically increase traffic along roads that are not designed to safely or economically handle this high volume. It's also clear that the county does not need an events venue located on Irish Creek. Given that we have over 486 signatures of residents and local individuals that oppose this, it is clear that this is not a need that the community feels. Any unneeded commercial development is wholly inappropriate for the lands zoned for agriculture and forest protection and conservation. And the right of one landowner to commercially develop land intended for other reasons cannot be approved. When doing so, will impact the property values of the people around them. We appreciate the planning commission sought to find a compromise by recommending some restrictions. But no restrictions will alleviate the negative impacts that we've But no restrictions will alleviate the negative impacts that we've presented, both here verbally and in the eighteen page document that I submitted before you. No VDOT or Health Department assessment will change the fact that this venue, if approved, will destroy the peace and the ability of the adjacent properties to ever sell their properties. No one will buy a property directly across from a venue that operates fifty times a year. And with all respect, fifty times a year is all but two weekends out of the year. And every wedding is a Friday night and a Saturday night and Sunday morning. And given that they also have Airbnbs that are adjacent, that, that's not going to be thirteen percent of the time. It's going to be more like thirty-four percent of the time. And the Airbnbs do operate three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So I want to close with two things. First, this board is legally, ethically, and morally required to recognize the rights and the interests of the general public, the permanent damage that this exception will cause to the landowners surrounding it, and that it is inconsistent with the land regulations and policies that you are bound to follow. And second, back to the right of questions, one landowner, especially one that doesn't live in this community, does not have the right to develop an unnecessary commercial business when it violates the rights of everybody around it. There are ample locations and appropriate districts for this business to be developed. So this is about the safety and the general welfare of the citizens of Irish Creek. We have already compromised by having short-term rentals and the approval of one exception for a campsite. And we understand that Airbnbs are allowed when they're rented out of single-family homes. But in actual practice and by their own words and their proposal, they purchased this property to develop a commercial lodging operation that could run three hundred and sixty-five days a year without the requirement of a special permit because the, 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 the three parcels or the two parcels where their Airbnbs are on, they are under different ordinances. They're regulated in different ways and they're taxed in different ways. And I appreciate that Mrs. Hamilton says that this will be well organized and well managed. But I would like to ask you, how will you well organize and well manage a hundred and seventy-five people who can walk ten yards over to the next parcel where thirty-two of them can stay for the whole entire weekend and party until midnight every single night? Considering this property's location and size and the nature of the business, the rights of four hundred and eighty local residents substantially outweigh the rights of one developer seeking an exception for an unneeded and unwanted business. I want to add one more thing if I could. I'm not a lawyer, but I suspect that my husband would tell you that there's a lot of time at home that he feels like I am. But I did read every single page. I read every single page of your land development regulations, your comprehensive plan, your mission, vision, and values, and your strategic economic development plan. And it doesn't take a law degree to understand that your decision here can only be made on the objective basis of an analysis of those documents. And I appreciate Mr. Lyons saying as well that this is not a personality contest. You have to make this based on your rules, your regulations, your intentions that are in the documents that govern this body, as well as the interests in the local residents and the general public. You cannot make this decision based on how we feel about weddings or the beauty of the proposed venue or how nice the Hamiltons are or how much business they've generated already in this county. Those are subjective criteria that lend to arbitrary and capricious decision-making and constitute a violation of the oath that you took when you elected to serve for your districts. I trust that all of you will be fair and that you'll make the right decision in saying no to this exception to protect the overall best interests of the public and the residents of Irish Creek. I thank you for your time and your service to the county. And for the integrity to honestly ask yourselves, would you want this venue in your own backyard? Mr. and Mrs. Hamilton don't because they're not building it in their own backyards. They're building it in ours. The only reasonable and objective answer to this request is no. Thank you.
Gentlemen.
Linda Felix followed by, uh, Scotty Kilva.
My name is actually Lindy Felix. It's okay. And I live in the South River District and I live about a mile from Irish Creek's entrance. First of all, one of the things we're not talking about it is like, we're looking to do natural tourism here. We are looking to support hunting and fishing and people wanting to come here because we're a wildlife recreation area. And this is not part of it. And Irish Creek is very much part of it, man. Irish Creek from South River. I mean, I mean, if you live along South River, you know when they stock it. You go up Irish Creek and Nettle Creek, you know when they stock it. We have a serious group of outdoors men, outdoors women who use these lands and rivers as part of their recreational and passionate life to start to develop it for commercial things for probably people from weddings who are coming out. I mean, it's wrong. I, I like how the Hamiltons have done it kind of park-like and cleared under the forest. But the truth is, that's not even how the natural forest looks. It looks like a park. Okay, that's great. But this is national forest land. This is wild land. This is land that has traditionally been a place you could go and see what it really can be like where it's wild, where there's wild animals, where there's fast-moving waters. I also have lived there through several deaths. I know about those crosses. It's a narrow McAdam lane. It's not even banked at certain places. I mean, it's an unsafe road for people traveling even who know the road. But we're talking about bringing strangers in, lots of strangers. So I'm totally against it. So many people here have done their research about the law and about the zoning that I, again, I'm a little surprised we're considering it because it's way out of the, the zoning as I see it. I don't have anything to say about the Hamiltons. Seems like they got plenty of friends. Seems like they're nice people. Seems like they do good things. But this is the wrong place for this to happen and we don't need it. We already have two wedding venues on Board and Grant, which is also a narrow McAdam road with very little shoulders and farmers on both sides. We already are endangering people in the county with this idea of these proposed places. Now I'm kind of for ecuadesto because it's an agricultural, it's agricultural. They're doing a vineyard. I see that we're sort of pro vineyard and I'm for saving the land. So that's a good thing. That's farmland, but this is wild, natural land. Let's leave it wild and natural. Let's be known for that. Let's stay one of those places where people can come and see real forest, real wild rivers where they can come and fish and hunt. That's disappearing across the country and we still have it. Let's keep it.
Thank you.
I know there's a lot of passion in the room, but please let's be respectful of everybody here.
Scotty Kilva, and I apologize, can't read the last name. Scotty, uh, K I V. Okay.
Did you want to check upstairs? Do, is there anybody that could be upstairs?
We can do that afterwards. Uh, the next one on the list is Everett Montgomery.
Hello, I'm Everett Montgomery. Oh, leaving the Northridge District, but I own land. Well, I don't know, but I have land. My mother lives on Nettle Creek Road. Down from Blue Ridge Parkway. And like others have said, you know, Irish Creek is a dangerous road. And I grew up on Nettle Creek. I grew up on Irish Creek. I don't even go up there when they stop trout, pet a little bit of trout. You know, Sunday morning, you know, I wait the church. Everybody makes the church. I'll wait after they let out with the church, just as bad as everybody else. You meet them on Sunday morning. And I can tell you the mileage, it's four miles up Irish Creek. You know, and a lot of them, they come from off Parkway. You know, it's two and a half miles down a windy dirt road. It ain't good for nothing, pig path. And it's four miles down the creek. To the property. You know, and, and they had the map a while ago where the national forest starts. That's one of the worst curves on Irish Creek at bridge. I don't know how many vehicles I've seen go off that bridge, go through the woods, down in the creek. You know, you got seventy-five vehicles. You have a bridge monitor there saying, oh, you seventy-six, parks closed. Ain't gonna happen. You know, you got five more rolled in, ten, twenty. Come on, you know, they got money. It's just, it's just a danger, you know? I got a lot of friends, family on Irish Creek. You know, I hate to say, won't even get hurt by some of the traffic. I've already met vehicles in the curve going across the bridge to the property. I guess looking for the rental place that he has, stopped in the middle of the road, that curve. You know, it's a blind curve. You know, you lucky, lucky to miss it. You know, and big week days, nobody say on their side of the road again with, I drive a truck, local Rockbridge County, surrounding counties, ninety percent of the people you meet, they on the wrong side of the road. That's all I got. Thank you.
Uh, Marilyn Shaner Birkins.
I'm Marilyn Shaner Birkins, Plank Road, Buffalo is my district. Thank you for being here tonight. I wish we didn't have to be here tonight. But I do feel like we have an obligation to support the people who live in Irish Creek and to support the wild of Irish Creek. And if I had grown up on Irish Creek instead of in town, I probably could sing better. But who will sing for me? So I have an Airbnb as my neighbor. I think it's advertised for like sixteen or twenty beds or something. Kind of sad. Used to be a single-family dwelling. Um, but from that, one Airbnb, um, we do have more traffic. Intoxicated, drugged. Um, I can't be the judge of that. I just try to stay out of their way. They're driving too fast. Uh, there's more noise. Weekends, this place wants to have a weekend after weekend of, of a party venue. Uh, there is more noise. I can be out in my garden and think something's wrong because I hear somebody yelling and stops me in my tracks. I think I need to go help somebody, but oh, they're just having a party. I don't like it. There's more trash. Um, oh, a little bit of shooting after ten PM. You know, people don't follow rules. People don't respect other people. They don't live here. They don't care. Drones scaring my livestock. Not, not weekend after weekend, but somebody comes in and wants to have fun. They don't know where the property lines are. They just do what they want to do. I hope this doesn't happen in Irish Creek. Bad idea. Um, along with more traffic, incidentally, probably comes more complaints because somebody's driving a nice vehicle down the road and they don't like the vegetation. So along comes VDOT with their herbicide. Because herbicide is one of the tools in their toolbox. They'll tell you that. I'm not a big fan, but at any rate, I've heard several people comment about Irish Creek being part of the Chesapeake Bay watershed and the joy of the fishers there and other people who enjoy the wildlife. But that herbicide does affect our wildlife and there will be more of that. Our resources are limited. I used to have a spring. It was a wonderful spring. It served my family since the early eighteen hundreds. Oh, it was wonderful. I don't have it anymore. New properties dropped their wells. There goes my spring. I don't know what the people in Irish Creek will do, but creep, exception, loss of culture. I'll shop more at J and J's. I'll buy another barbecue. I like their food, but not this venue. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is everyone that signed up at this time.
Let's check online and can we have someone check upstairs? We did. Okay.
Uh, nobody has their hand raised.
All right. Is there anyone in the room that did not sign up, uh, and that would like to have their three minutes here? If you did not have the opportunity. Yeah, yes, sir.
My name's Elijah Vance. I grew up on the South River District and on Irish Creek my whole life, thirty-four years old. Everybody's talking about the traffic and everything and everybody's mentioned the fishermen. But one thing that nobody's mentioned is the cyclists that come through South River and Irish Creek every spring and summer by the hundreds. Long lines of cyclists. And you're wanting to bring a wedding venue on top of that and on top of fishermen. It's bad news all over. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Real fast, I'm Allison Garber. I live on Irish Creek. I've lived there my whole life with my family. I've got a toddler, my cousin and neighbor, she's got toddlers. We live right beside the road. I like keeping a short leash on him, but he's still safe right now going outside and being from me to you to the road. If all this comes in, he'll have to stay in the backyard. He won't be allowed out front. Our dogs will have to be on a tighter leash. It scares me for the traffic for my kids. That's all.
Thank you. There's not anybody else? Anybody? I will close the public hearing. But, um, we're, we're going to discuss and then we're going to move on. You, if, hang on, you'll, you'll figure it out.
Madam Chair, I think you read out a list of letters or people that we've heard from. I just want everybody to be aware that that's not the totality of everybody we heard from. There were, you know, voice conversations and other things that happened just personally. So I know some folks that I talked to that weren't, weren't in your list. So I just want everybody to know that wasn't, to me, that's not complete.
Well, the reason I read the list is to, is to let the people here know that we have seen their letters.
I just wanted to know there were other, other, other comments and, and, uh, it's been overly negative here tonight, but I mean, I, I've had many positive contacts. So I just wanted to get that out there too. As we discuss.
Apparently you got comments that I didn't get.
As I said.
I'm stating facts.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I looked at the, the emails where your email was, was listed there. I, I, I did, I do try to make sure we're all getting the same information. I did. But the voice call, I mean, I, I, I got several phone calls. That you, I don't know, unless you're tapping my phone.
What you were referring to is phone calls that I didn't get that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I too like Mr. Lewis. First of all, I want to thank everyone here tonight. Whether you emailed or called or just showed up because I think it's important as a supervisor that we hear from everybody. For example, was last week we had a public hearing on the budget and taxes and we had two speakers. Meeting lasted ten minutes. And so how, how do you make an informed decision if you only hear from two people? But we did get a lot of emails. There were a lot of positives, a lot of negatives, got a lot of phone calls. I mean, they were coming in. I want to assure the one ladies who spoke tonight that I got her voicemail, but we were in the middle of the meeting when you called it or something, but I did have time to listen to your voicemail. And it's a, it's a tough decision. Uh, you got the community that wants to stay peaceful. You've got, uh, the Hamiltons who I think have, you know, usually I don't go out to places. Usually I'll listen to the planning commission, but I started getting calls. You know, I think everyone, at least majority of people here are stating worst-case scenarios. Uh, I was impressed when I went out to the Hamiltons of how much care that was being taken in how this was going to go in and maintain the setting, the way it is. It, you know, you're going to call it a wedding venue, but it, it was, it looked like it was going to be done right with the neighbors in mind. The, you know, the road is unmarked. I go home tonight, I go out Turnpike, turn on Sugar Creek. There's not a line. There's line curves several times a month. You have to dodge cars. You have to come in the other way. That's Rockbridge County. You know, the traffic, let the trout. You know, the traffic, let the trout truck go out there and you're going to see traffic. No, I don't have a wedding venue. And I didn't interrupt you when you were speaking. I'm just pointing out things that to make. I was very impressed with the design of the septic thing. I actually looked at it and studied it. Because the things that we need to be concerned about are the river, the land used for fishing and hunting. Except for those that are spotlighting, you're not going to be hunting in the evenings during most of the weddings are taking place. Usually, and I'm no expert, but most of the wedding things last for a period of four to five hours. So there's lots of things to take in on both sides. I was very impressed with my site visit. And but I'm very impressed with the presentations and everything that was brought out tonight. But like Mr. Lewis, there are a lot of good things that we received that you haven't heard tonight.
I too went out to the site and I was struck by how much, it's been a long time since I've been to Irish Creek. And how beautiful and, and private and just serene it is. And, and I think and I certainly admire the Hamiltons, what they're doing in their business life. Like the barbecue too. But that site, I feel that there has to be more buffer. It is in a bowl. It is absolutely in a bowl and there's as quiet as you can be. And let's face it, it's a wedding. You don't want a wedding to be quiet. The point of them is not necessarily to be quiet, to be joyous. And that's great, but I wouldn't want to attend fifty weddings a year if I were your neighbor. And it's to me, there is a balance and since it's not enough property to protect the neighbors from that, to create a more balanced, that for me, I just can't, I can't go there. I feel like it would be one neighbor capitalizing on the serenity of the site at the expense of everybody, of all their neighbors and the people here. And many of these people have lived here for, you know, generations are sitting in this room and people that have owned their property for a long, long time. And it's not that things can't be done to make money to, you know, no one, no one's against that, but there has to be some kind of guardrails on what we can do in a community because what it does is it destabilizes the community for the other people. Very worried about the bridge. I understand that the, that the neighbor across the street, you know, is was hopeful that the, the bridge can be angled. There's no guarantee that the, the bridge will be angled. There's none. And that would mean every car coming in and out would, that, that, that neighbor would have to endure that kind of thing. And the property can be developed for more, for more, I believe that it could be used for more Airbnbs as a commercial site, but bringing seventy-five people or seventy-five cars, you multiply that, how many people, that is a lot for a neighborhood to absorb. And while it might be thirteen percent of the time, it's on every weekend, it's virtually every weekend. Most people expect to have their weekends at home. That is what enjoying your house is. I mean, you just need that. You really need that, even for the retired folk, but maybe not as much. But still the weekends to me are important times. So I, I, that's all I have to say on, on that. So. Gentlemen?
I thought there was landscape plan, wasn't there, buffer plan?
There, there is, if I recall correctly, I could pull it up. There is an existing, as shown on the site plan, there is an existing tree growth.
I'm not talking, I mean, you're living in a bowl, you're in a bowl. There's literally no way to protect it from sound. There, that's, that's just not going to happen. So.
We have a, we have a sound ordinance, a noise ordinance.
Okay. For someone to, for someone to do that, they literally have to hire a lawyer and sue. That's not, I, I would not want to do that to, to our citizens. Sir, 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 the, the public hearing has closed. This is time for us to, to work this out.
You know, Lou in his statement said regardless of what happens here tonight, God has a plan.
Will you make that?
I'm sorry. Who adjusted for me earlier? You need to come here and do it again. I'm sorry. I'm, actually I'm mic shy, but, but you know, Lou made a statement that regardless of what happened here tonight, God has a plan for him and for that property. I've sat and listened. I've received many calls. And I've said this before, being an elected official, I think I have to answer to my citizens, the people that elected me. And from what I'm hearing from them tonight is they are opposed to it. Therefore, I make a motion that we deny the request for the special event venue.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Day, can you hold your motion just for a second?
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Did you not?
He didn't have a go, but that's all right.
It's a, you know, like Mr. Lyons and Mr. Lewis said, I had plenty of interactions with, with people who were against the project. Also had interactions with people who supported the project. I did go and look at the property. Very impressed with, with what the Hamiltons have done thus far. And I'm not sure how anything they've done thus far and looking at other projects they've done, how it would devalue property. I've been up, I've been on Irish Creek majority of my life as well, fishing and you know, any given day when they stock, you know, two hundred plus cars. The road may not be lined, but I can tell you it's probably better than the majority of roads in my district. So, you know, having said all that and having thought about it, you know, I was heavily considering approving it when I came in tonight. The difference being, you know, listening to the public, listening to the citizens and their concerns. I don't think it is as bad as, one of the, one of my peers says, worst case scenario. You know, I don't think it's that bad. But I do think it changes characteristic of the neighborhood. And I'm not sure how I feel about that to this point.
Chris, did you have something to say?
Just as far as the process goes, historically, we've allowed the applicant to respond to, you know, after a public hearing.
Yes, yes. Mr. Hamilton.
Or staff for that matter if needed.
Okay.
We've heard a lot, just like you guys have. And I keep hearing two things majorly is, is several things is retirement, road and water. We may reside at another address, but I live on Irish Creek as much as I live at Thirty Buck Skin Lane. My eighty-seven-year-old father actually gets mad at me over staying up there so much. The second thing is water. Per Mr. Slaton here and other conversations, even before this wedding venue ever came, we can drill three more wells, we can put in three septic systems, and we can build at least three to four more houses for our land per Rockbridge County. So the impact of one well and one state-of-the-art engineered drain field that John Burleson, an engineer that went to school for, designed it. And by the way, the land perks very good on Irish Creek. You could dump a five gallon bucket of water on the ground and it dissipates and you'll never see it bump. I feel like that unfortunately, emotions from citizens maybe have played into this. And with not having the knowledge of us spending a couple thousand dollars several years ago to get an engineered drain field designed. It's a thousand gallons per day. So if you did the math, and I don't know it quite off the top of my head, but if a hundred and seventy-five people came and they flushed the toilet and you had a half a gallon per flush, each one used it once, which they won't, that's three hundred and fifty gallons. This system is designed to handle a thousand gallons per day with tank storage, timed dose. It tells it when to pump. It don't just dump into the ground. It doses it into the ground over a period of twenty-four hours after that venue. If we had fifty events the first year, two years or three years, we'd be ecstatic. We might be talking about several years having ten or fifteen events possibly. We've got to go to places and get it booked. She just did a wedding in Bedford yesterday, a state-of-the-art venue, was ninety-five in three years.
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one in three years. So this whole thing has been made to be the worst case scenario from day one. I've heard concerns about the road. April sixteenth, they stocked trout. Since I was a little boy, I fished there. I've never seen as many people on Irish Creek as I did April sixteenth. Matter of fact, I stopped in the road and I talked to one of these people opposing it and I, I made mention to him. I said, you realize your trucks parked in the middle of the road. He was out getting petition signed with eight or ten fishermen. He said, I said hello first and he said hello back. And I said, you realize your trucks parked in this road? That was literally, I counted them yesterday, four seconds coming out of a curve. So if it's that dangerous of a road, why would we park in the middle of that road to get a petition signed? So, you know, we can sit here and debate all day back and forth. You guys has a decision to make. We want it. Yes, sir. Mr. Day, God does have a plan and I've got to accept it. And I'm going to be a big enough person not to take it personally. I'm big enough to stand on my own feet with anybody. But at the end of the day, the first thing y'all started at in this meeting was both economic development and small businesses. We have did our part.
And trying to continue to do our part. Also speaking about the lighting and the traffic, first of all, the traffic flow. Another gentleman spoke up here and said that he doesn't travel the road on Sundays because of the church traffic. We're talking about a very similar flow of traffic. Yes, folks may come in about the same time and trickle in, but I feel they'll actually go slower because they're looking for the venue. So they'll take more time and pay attention more. While the other residents, I can't, there's, there's no way for us to control that. VDOT has made the laws for those rates. We can't control that. But when you leave an event like this, no one, they don't all leave at the same time. They're going to trickle out. It also may not be a hundred and seventy-five people. It might be fifty. It might be a hundred. You know, we're talking about, again, worst case scenarios with this. Of course, we want to be able to plan for an event of a hundred and seventy-five people and fifty events a year. But that is not what, how this is going to start. Do we want to, to slow the business because of, of being scared? No, we don't want to do that. We, we want to be able to build our business as we see fit. I feel like that's the American way. You know, this can also bring business and jobs to a lot of people. We're talking about construction jobs. We're talking about maintenance and landscaping jobs. We're talking about other caterers coming, photographers, videographers. A lot of people could benefit from this in our community. And yes, there may be people that travel outside. We can only hope that people outside of our area would come here and spend their money. That's the point. But it'll also be a lot of Rockbridge County residents that do know the area. But we hope to have an affordable place for them to come and use this facility. Even hopeful that some of the folks on Irish Creek may want to have a, you know, an event there. Who knows what the future may hold? We can't tell that and we can't control how people drive on that road. We can only do our part to protect the people that come to our venue, to keep them safe and to monitor them while they're there. You know, and as far as the lighting and light pollution and that kind of thing has been mentioned, venues are extremely low lit. To the point, multiple venues that I work at in Rockbridge County, it's difficult as a caterer to even see to do my job because it's so lit, because you're trying to make it be a part of the forest, to make it be part of, of the surrounding area that you're in. That's the whole point is to, you know, bring beauty to that area to, to, you know, that's why people want to get married in those kind of places is because it's beautiful. We love Irish Creek with all our heart. We feel like it is going to be our retirement as well. And we would never want to hurt our neighbors, the creek or any part of that community. And we feel like it's been definitely portrayed as the worst case scenario.
I'm going to speak on that four hundred and some signatures as well. The day that I spoke to the gentleman in the road, I took materials to the cabinet. We just got a final inspection on the last cabinet we did through the county properly and got permits properly. He pulled down at my bridge and I was going to try to catch him and say, hey, let's have a civil conversation. It just so happened to be the man he got to sign a petition used to work for me. He's a little special. Don't did that to him. He don't work for me anymore. But I walked up and I said, did you sign that petition? I actually called the guy's name. I said, hey, and he kept walking. Maybe he didn't hear me. It was water running. I said, hey, did you sign that petition? He said, yeah. He said it was for your wedding venue. I said, he sure was against my wedding venue. He said, well, I'll go find him now and get it back. So those four hundred and some petitions, and I'll give you one more story and I could give a lot. Just this weekend, the last stocking Thursday, that, and I don't know who this was, but a person staying in our Airbnb, somebody approached him again about signing a petition. And the gentleman says, why don't we even live around here? He said, well, that don't matter. Just sign a petition. He said, no, I'm not signing you petition because I'm not from here. I have no dog in this fight. So in your four hundred and some signatures, a lot of them probably didn't understand what they were saying.
And were they scared by what was said?
Everyone.
Were they scared by what was said in the worst case scenario? Again, we have no intention of harming anyone there and we'll work to the best of our ability to make it be, you know, conducive to everyone.
And you know, I don't know if I understand what light pollution is. We have just about on all our pavilions out, we have the little soft LED.
Edison.
Edison lights. But you know, when I look at neighbors, I see three different arc lights that run from dawn to dusk, dusk to dawn. So is that light pollution? You know, and I, I feel like a lot of people got the wrong picture. It's one gentleman sitting in this crowd and he didn't speak tonight, but I personally invited him to come to the property. And, and I think he had a different perspective.
I think it's important to not point out, just, just tell us about your project. Let's move on and, and talk about your project. Everyone, I need you to be quiet, please. Let's let the Hamiltons fit and finish up.
Thank you. At the end of the day, we feel like we've come to the county. We went through the right process. With the exception of the misunderstanding of the tent and it got labeled as a campground. And we paid our dues. We put a very expensive drain field in for that to get it passed through you guys and y'all was all. We put a very expensive drain field in for that to get it passed through you guys and y'all was all gracious to us. You know, it's, it's been people that thought still not long ago through this process that we just want to put 300 campers in. That's not true. The only campground we have is one tent, two vehicles and five people that can ever be at it.
And we didn't want it called a campground. It was an ordinance that had to be. So I feel like there's a miscommunication.
It's been a lot of misleading.
Right.
But you know, I think we've said all we can say, we, we tried to do it the right way. We're, we're willing to work at 14% of the time, 50 events in 365 days is under 14%. At, at the end of the day, that's all we're limited to, to you guys, if you voted. That's what the planning commission put out. And as she said, 175 ain't a magical number. That doesn't mean that we're gonna have 175 people every wedding venue. So we appreciate you, Ty. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what else I want to say, I mean, we, we, we have things we can consider here and things we can't, right? Of, of all comments and concerns that have been made with the planning condition, planning commission recommendation and the conditions that are put on there, which I, I know don't completely erase the concerns, but certainly work towards mitigating those. And I felt a, 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 a letter from the neighbor immediately across the road from the proposed bridge stating that he understands the Hamiltons will work with them to do everything they can to, to mitigate their concerns. To me, that was big. We sat in these things for years and don't often get neighbors like that who, 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 who want to work with, with applicants.
And, and I was impressed too, but keep in mind that they cannot, it's VDOT that's going to make this decision. And so the chances of anything happening or changing that bridge design might not be there. So that, that's, that's really important to understand.
It is, but that's not the only way you could control light issues between two neighbors.
Okay, that, that's fine.
And you know, to, to the traffic and number of cars, there have been events happening, you know, up Irish Creek for 40 years, you know, contests of different varieties. So you know, there's, there's been that. This is a potentially a few more cars. I couldn't say how many people were at those matches, but I know that, that events existed there, have been.
Could I like one more comment?
I, I, I would like, I will have the staff. I really feel if, if you, that I would need to open up the, for, for the entire group. So if you don't mind, is it about this project, the project?
It's just about the road traffic.
Well, in general, I think, I think we all have the, I think we have that. I think we understand that. So if you don't mind, I will, I will move on. To my, anybody else would like to? I, I understand you're doing wonderful things and you're able to do good things out there for you that is tolerable, that, that kind of commerce is, is being, is tolerable for the neighborhood and it's working out fine there. I'm just, it's just too much for this neighborhood. And it's not just what you want to do with this, is what will happen to pieces surrounding you? And that's what happens when you do a special exception in prop, in, in a property that's not usually has that. It becomes unstable. Things happen, people sell, people have to sell. Properties then become maybe other properties become commercial. And it's really, this is why we have zoning. This is why we have businesses in certain areas. If you had 200 acres, I, for me, I feel like that would be something that we would be able to consider how we would do a wedding venue. And I appreciate you might only have 10 or 15 this time, but you may have 50. And the, the, your neighbors can't be assured they have to expect 50 because that's what you're able. And it's not just for you. You can sell the venue and it, this will, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, this will fall to somebody, the owner of the property, correct?
Uh, that is correct.
So you, you could sell this to somebody else and then they wouldn't even be assured of your good name and the way that you conduct business. That, that is what I mean by destabilizing the, that community for me. That's how I feel about it. So we had, did you still, are you, you have that motion? Would you like to withdraw that motion?
David, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, I'll renew my motion.
Do we have a second? Mr. McDaniel, no. I, I'm gonna pass the gavel so that I can second Mr. Day's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussions? Mr. Day?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Day.
Vice Chair votes no, motion fails.
All righty. So now we have to have a motion. So no, it is not over. Have a seat. The motion to deny failed. So gentlemen, would you like to proceed?
Well, would we pass the gavel back? Okay.
I have the.
Check to see who was, who had it. I'm not sure, I would have asked our attorney for advice on whether the denial of that constitutes approval or.
And also let, let's check. We are approving with conditions. The conditions or do we consider conditions here?
Yes, the, the, as, as discussed in the staff report, the planning commission has recommended approval with set conditions. Of course, the board supervisors has the ability to take those conditions and adopt them along with the approval ordinance. The board supervisors has the ability to modify the order or modify the draft conditions to add or, or eliminate. I will say one thing that the planning commission, we hadn't thought about this or hadn't, the planning commission had not discussed this. It would be beneficial if there is a, if there is willingness to approve, to have an implementation, the special exception to be implemented by a certain date. That has to do with state law stating that has to be implemented within six months unless otherwise specified. County code follows that as well. So with that being said, that's one thing to consider as far as the, the 12th condition, if you will.
And what you have before you is the ordinance and the, and the conditions are attached to the ordinance as an exhibit to the ordinance. So the, the normal motion would be the motion to adopt the ordinance. If you, if you did, unless you're voting against it, then it would be Mr. Day made the proper motion to vote against, to make a vote, vote for, it would be a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Right, but we could.
You, you, you can, you can change. Yeah, the conditions, the board supervisor makes the final decision on the conditions. So you can add or subtract to what's listed there.
No, but I'll try to ask it for you in a second. So gentlemen, are, are you at all, are you finding the conditions fit, what you would like? Anybody have any?
I, I'm sorry, I was asking a procedural question. I'd like to know the answer to first before we start talking anymore. That's okay. It, it, where, where, where does this leave us, John? With, with the denial of the denial or is that an approval or?
No, no, you, you have a, you have a most, you have the ordinance before you'd have to affirmably adopt that ordinance or any change. You, you can, you can, you can adopt it with amendments too. So what should be changed to it?
Gentlemen, everyone here, we, it's gonna take us time here. So if you just, please be patient, the public hearing is closed. So we need you to please let us work it out. Mr. McDaniel, is there anything, I'm sorry to. Could we consider reducing the number of events in this venue?
Chris, can you put the conditions back up on this?
Yes.
Uh, this is the, the exhibit A as shown in your approval ordinance. Would it be beneficial for me to read, read them again or would you like to just view them?
Let's go down to the number of events.
Uh, that, the number of events would be number one, recommended by the planning commission. The permit is limited to no more than 50 special events per year. The, the, as far as the number of attendees and vehicles, that pertains to number three. Events will be limited to a maximum of 175 attendees with no more than 75 vehicles on site for events. As it goes on, say, event manager shall be on site during all special events.
Chris, can you answer a question for me? The, the building, is it open? I'm, I'm wondering about the, oh, amplified music must be enclosed.
Uh, yes, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hamilton, the, the majority, the vast majority of the building, I'd say 80% is enclosed and, and conditioned, if you will. There is a portion on the, on the, assume the north end, I believe it is, that's open to air. But any amplified music would have to be within enclosed structure as recommended by the planning commission.
At Echo Adesso, we had a decibel that we were trying to keep the music at so that the neighbors couldn't hear it. But of course they had 300 acres, so it's easier to do that.
And that, to be clear, that was associated with the outdoor event application, not the special event application for wedding.
But there was a decibel to, to keep it still. That you don't see that as a way to minimize the impact on the neighbors?
No, I don't disagree that that would be a, a way to, that, that's a way to reduce the impact on the neighbors. But what that would be, I'm not prepared to say what that would be at the property lines, what decimal level it would be at the property lines, that type of thing. And that's not associated with the, of course, currently the, the county does not use decimal readers on, on special event venues nor the outdoor music regulations, the outdoor entertainment festivals, I should say.
And the, and the lighting ordinances, are they similar to what we have down around Natural Bridge State Park?
Uh, yes. Well, to be clear, the Natural Bridge State Park is, is very pro dark sky compliance. There are some parts of dark sky compliance that are not in, not in the actual ordinance. With that being said, in my opinion, it is a, it is a restrictive ordinance when it comes to, to, to lighting. Essentially, it does require it all to be fully shielded lights, aimed down, carefully shielded, directed, that type of thing.
We feel comfortable with that at the brewery across the street. Was it there from Natural Bridge?
Ma'am, I'm really sorry to have to, to ask you, please, please.
And how, how did they come up with the number 175?
Uh, it was, it was a discussion. The original proposal did include a greater number. The original proposal, bear with me here, included up to 200, 250. The venue will accommodate 200, 250. So I think obviously the discussion on the roads, the size of the parcel, that type of thing. Uh, it was narrowed down to the recommendation in front of you.
What was the square footage of the building narrowed down also? When the numbers got narrowed?
The original building started out at 60 by 120 and now it's sized to 60 by 100.
Do we want to postpone this decision? Do we want to extend this? If we are unsure of.
Madam Chair, if I may, one of the, several of the things I've been thinking about and trying to find a compromise, which I know.
Speaking to your gentleman, can, we have someone speaking here.
You know, trying to figure out a compromise. Cause I do appreciate and understand the, the neighbor's concerns. I also appreciate the right of a property owner to, to do on their property. It's a very difficult decision here. What I was just talking to Mr. Lyons about was potentially modifying some of the restrictions. And I'm not sure how, you know, the Hamiltons would feel about it. So I'm going to direct it to you and then you can decide if you want to ask anybody about it, okay?
Certainly.
Instead of the 50 events per year, reducing that to 20. Make it Friday and Saturday only and ending it by nine o'clock. I don't know how you or any of the other supervisors would feel about that.
Well, I mean, given how I feel about it, I think that it, it would be a lot less impactful. Well, I mean, given how I feel about it, I think that it it would be a lot less impactful on the neighbors. And to have 20, I think that what was shocking for most of the neighbors was every weekend possibility. That's what I was hearing. So. How do you feel about that, Mr. Day?
I don't have a thought or comment right now.
Okay. Sorry, didn't mean to sink you out.
I I I have another procedural question, as I often.
All right, go right ahead.
We do do if if we were to change these conditions and it gets to a point where where he's down to 5% of the time. And and then doesn't feel that he can proceed with the project a- at that point. It. I mean, if we grant if we grant something they that they choose not to accept, does that matter? You know what I mean?
I could I I could attempt to address that. Uh, so unlike proffers, a term called proffers are associated with rezonings. Uh, they do have to be voluntary and agreed upon. Uh, conditions, uh, unlike proffers do not have to be agreed upon and they are not voluntarily. If that if that if that answers your question.
No, I'm saying if if we change that, if we drop that number so low that that it that it business couldn't function and the applicant doesn't wish to proceed with the with the application. The I guess that doesn't matter, right?
You you have you have the right to impose what conditions you believe are appropriate within the law and and your determination.
The applicant would choose whether to proceed with.
And then applicant choose whether to proceed, yeah.
Can conditions be changed?
Yes, it's the same process as we're going through currently. Uh, it requires a public hearing with the planning commission and a public hearing with the board of supervisors. But to answer your question directly, yes, there is a process.
Let's say. We said 20 events a year. Whatever Mr. Friday, Saturday, nine o'clock. And in 18 months. The Hamiltons abide by everything and the neighbors are happy. Or accepting. That that it wasn't as bad as they thought. They could come back and say, okay, can we go 25?
Uh, that that is that that is correct. It would not require it, to be clear, it would not require that 18 month timeframe, but but yes, absolutely.
Because, you know, I I believe it's going to take special people to make this happen. And I think the Hamiltons are are those type of special people. And I'm just trying to compromise, give them a chance to prove themselves. Because.
Mr. White, please.
The other question that I had was where it speaks to event manager. Who is designated as event manager?
I I don't believe that's noted at this time. Uh, that that could be one of the landowners or they could certainly hire somebody for event manager.
Can we specify that?
Um, the conditions, e- even though they they are not, they have to be sound and reasonable and associated with the use of land. Um, per conditions, with that being said, uh, I would almost lean on Mr. Dryden to to interpret it that, you know, if requiring a landowner be present is is sound or reasonable associated with a use of land versus an event manager.
Yeah, I would be a little careful with that when we were trying to dictate who they have to hire. But you could say the type of person and the point and the qualification required. I would not be as concerned about designate the landlord needs to be there, but if you designate the, you know, the type person after hire gets a little bit messy. So I would I would suggest that we stay out of employment to the extent we can. But if you feel like designating the landlord or you feel like designating somebody with a particular qualification, which would be justifiable uh, as a as an event manager, I think those are those would be things that could stand up in court. It is as 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 Mr. Schleiden said, these normally are are things would normally run with the land, stuff that's tied to the land. So we want to be a little careful when moving things outside of of land conditions and it's like designate in particular, like if we were to name a particular individual, like this person has to be there, I think that wouldn't be justified. It's the capacity.
No, it could be landowner.
You could ask for something like that. I would I would think that it'd be acceptable, yes.
I would add that to my request of changes that landowner be present at the event.
Are you copying these?
I'm working on that. Yes, ma'am. Uh, one second, please.
I appreciate the the thoughts of trying to find a compromise. I sometimes try to do that myself. But again, I'm afraid if 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 well, I I I think the planning committee did their work. I think the conditions that are here are reasonable and 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 within sound zone principles. And I'm worried if we change those too much, then it defeats part of the goal of of having the place function. So then we're back to, you know, just denying at some point.
I appreciate that, Mr. Lewis. But, you know, with the vote that was just taken, it took everything that I had to vote no on that. So if I'm going to vote yes, there's going to be added restrictions. It is where I'm at.
Do you want more time for this? Would delaying this?
No. It's 60. Reducing the number of cars to 60, 20 events. The landowner has to be present Friday and Saturday only, ending by nine o'clock. 60 cars max. Is what I'd be willing to do. Uh, along with the the other conditions that was recommended to us.
The 60 cars max is only attendees, it's not servers and people.
I don't know how you.
It is. He defined it, the 75 is yes.
It, yeah, I agree. Uh, bear with me here, I'll go, uh, the the one that I was clarifying for um, uh, 75 is the events will be limited to 175 attendees with no more than 60 uh, vehicles on site for events. So that could use clarification. I'm catching up with you. What what was your recommended number, sir, of attendees? Is it still, you did not modify?
Okay. What about uh, landowner piece? I mean, it's uh, what what about it? Chris or John? Or Dave, I guess, landowner and immediate family or something to give them a little more flexibility. I mean, we're basically writing it out. Yeah. I think your intent there is to make sure the there's somebody who has some skin in the cane present to to make sure the events run smoothly. And, you know, broadening a little bit there might might give them more flexibility and still achieve your goal.
Are you going to find immediate family member?
Isn't it the in? Well. Oh. I mean, isn't that that that's not a common definition defined in?
I I think it'd be helpful if you'd find normally definition would be the you your straight lineal descendants, your children, your parents. And and you could include in-laws. That's not unusual to include son-in-law's daughters-in-law. But that would be that would be up to you. I think I would suggest that, um, if you're concerned about to go ahead and state immediate family members, which include uh, owners, their children and their parents. So it'd be a a no- normal thing. You could add children-in-laws and normally you don't go down to grandchildren. That's that that would be up to you. You could find as broadly as narrow as you'd like to. It's a suggestion.
Well, I I think. Go back to your earlier statement. You're gonna you're gonna change restrictions. And there's that fine line, you change it too much. You you can't function. You don't you you don't change them enough, then you can't get the votes. So. I think for us to sit here and understand, but but just start, what about this? What about this? What about this? This is not the correct way to do it. And I understand Mr. McDaniel's position.
Well, I think the difficulty is because it's forgive me, I I won't say anything. Yeah.
But that being said, the we're going to sit here all night and all these people are waiting. I think it's it's time to either either put up and shut up. And so I'm going to say I move to approve as presented originally. And so the so then if three of you don't agree to that, then that's fine. And it doesn't get passed. But for us to sit here back and forth, let's let's call for, that's my most.
Your motion is to approve to approve the ordinance to approve. Or to? Yes, yeah, I mean, to 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 be clear.
And and just say where you stand.
All right, we have a motion.
No changes.
No changes. As presented.
Okay, motion on the floor to approve with the conditions. I have a second. Any other conversation? We ready? Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
And I vote no. Everyone, I hope we will all go home and heal over this process and um, have a good evening. You all were you all were great. I know a lot of emotions there.
We're not done.
We are just about done. We've done everything to adjourn.
Oh.
We'll let we'll let them clear. Give them a second. All right, Mr. Mr. Lewis? Mr. Lewis, would you like to give me a motion to adjourn, please? All right, do I have a second? Is that a second? Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons and I vote yes.